I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Avalon City Council, June 3rd, 2014. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 And Jo Sampson will be leading us in the invocation, and we are going to be having this invocation in memory of Shirley Safely Davie, who worked for the city of Avalon as our city clerk from 1964 to 2007.
Dear Lord, we ask for your divine guidance tonight. We ask you to help us make the decisions that will benefit the people of Avalon, Avalon itself, our community, our visitors, and the future of Avalon. We ask that you help us in our decision-making process, expedite the things that are priority for us here in our little town, and help us to do it the right way, the way it should be done. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Denise, may we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Cassidy.
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Here.
Councilmember Sampson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Olson.
Here.
And Mayor Marshall.
Here.
For those of you that are still out there, there is a primary election going on, and the polls are open until 8:00 PM, so please go out there and vote. I just, also, I wanted to announce that there will be a funeral service for Shirley Davie tomorrow at 10 o'clock at the Catholic Church. And also, I just wanted to throw out a little kudos to Eddie Vega, who picks up all of our trash, and I know for years we have seen him go down the street with his trash truck and maneuvering through the town and picking up all the trash. Well, the other night, the other day, he had a segue, and he had a cart behind it, and he was holding it with his hand and pulling it along the street, and it seemed very safe other than perhaps his shoulder going out, but he's gonna work out a little connection there. But it was a very slick way to do the trash, and I believe that we've also doubled up on a lot of those trash cans, which makes it easier for him and keeps our town a little cleaner, so kudos to Eddie. Are there any other announcements?
Mayor, I have just one brief one. It's been a few weeks now since we brought on Chris Wojcik, our interim chief financial officer. You may have seen Chris around City Hall, you've probably seen him at these council meetings, so I just wanted to have Chris just briefly stand up, officially introduce himself, so that you and the community knew who he was. Thank you, Chris.
Good evening to you. I have been here for a couple of weeks, and I guess one thing I did wanna make an apology to you, as I walk up and down the streets for lunch in the evenings and whatnot and walk around City Hall, I think I'm like maybe the one more oddly dressed people around.[220.12][220.12](laughter) So I apologize for that, I'll get more in lockstep, I promise, but I've been here for a couple of weeks now, fitting in well with the city, great department, good people to work with, as well as people here at the city, and learning a lot and getting caught up on, caught up on things for the department, for the city.
Great. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other announcements?
I have none, Mayor.
Written communications?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay, shall proceed to presentations?
Yes, Mayor, we have two presentations this evening. Starting off, we have Kelly Kahn from the Avalon Library. She's going to introduce a community project.
Good evening, thank you for having me. I'll start in just a second.
One second.
Jordan.
This was pretty short last time. Did good. It was pretty good.
Okay.
All right. My name's Kelly Kahn, and I'm the Community Library Manager at Avalon Library, and I'm here to talk about a project that we've just started at Avalon Library. It's called Catalina Photo Share, and it's a project in which we want the community to share historical photos, and the library will put them in an online collection. So I'm gonna talk a little more about it. You can see in the background of some of the slides, some of the examples of photos that we've already collected, and we'll be adding them to the collection that is not yet live. So I'm gonna tell you what we're looking for, what we're gonna do with the photos once we have them, and how you can participate. The bottom line is we're looking for historical photos, so we're saying prior to 1980, that's somewhat arbitrary. We're looking for street scenes, landmarks, homes, businesses, churches, schools, parks, the hospital, vehicles, pedestrians, or, since we're on an island, even things in the water, like boats or people sailing. We're looking for people, local families, clubs and organizations, visiting public figures, and activities like performances, sporting events, parades, and parties. So once we have the collection up online, it's going to be a positive because it's gonna be freely available, it's just gonna be on the internet so anyone can access it, it'll be publicly accessible. It's gonna be at a central location, so you'll be able to go there and find whatever you're looking for. It'll be organized, and the photos will be preserved into posterity. This is an example of the pilot project that our county library did. This is Photo East LA. As I mentioned before, the Catalina collection is not yet live because I'm still working on it, but I just wanna show you what it's going to look like. It'll pretty much be exactly like this. So you are able to browse through photos, or you can search by keyword. If you know a name, or a location, or a certain date that you're looking for, you can browse the photos that way. Here's an example of one of the photos. This is a school in East LA, and the photo was taken in 1818, I mean, 1918 or 1919. And you can zoom in, see different sizes, you can download it in multiple sizes, or you can print it from your desktop computer. And on that same screen below, you would be able to see information, as much information as we could collect, on the history of the photo. And I wanna talk a little bit about how the community members here can contribute. We'll need three things. We'll need a brief description of the photo, as much information as you know about when it was taken, who it's of. We'll need a signed photo release, giving you, you giving us permission to include the photo in the collection. And I do wanna mention, the county library is not gonna claim copyright to any of these images, and they are intended for personal or research use only. And we will finally need a digital copy of the photo, and that's the tricky part. One way that we can get the digital photos is if you bring your photos in person to the library. It's best right now if you make an appointment, and I will try to scan the photos at your convenience. And we will also have periodic drop-in photo scanning days. You might have heard, we had, May 15th, 16th, or 17th, we had a period of time when you could drop in and scan your photos, and that's how we have some of the photos that you've seen in this slideshow. And I wanna make it clear, we're not gonna keep originals of anyone's photos, and they can be photos, I'm referring to prints, but they can be slides or negatives as well. And once we scan the photos, you'll receive a flash drive with copies of your digital photos, and that's all free, of course, 'cause it's the library. And if you already have photos that are digitized, you can upload them. And there's a form through our website, and you can get to our website by doing a Google search for Avalon Library Catalina. It will take you to this page, or you can use the shortcut, which is is.gd/avalonlibrary, then click on the little widget for Catalina Photo Share, and when the collection's live, you'll be able to see the live collection. In the meantime, you can upload your digital photos. And that's about it. I do wanna encourage people, if you're interested in participating, this week would be wonderful because it's before the start of the summer, and it's already June, I just wanna briefly mention, we're having our annual summer reading program, starting June 17th, the Tuesday after everyone gets out of school here. We'll have reading incentives for all ages, art activities, games, and performances in our workshops. Thank you.
Great. Well, I'm sure some of you have archives of wonderful photos, so we encourage the community to contact the library and get involved with that. I'm sorry I didn't get here till 84, so not gonna win us some pictures of my mom.[581.29][581.29](laughter) Richard, you, I'm sure you've got a lot you can share, huh?
I've been here for a little bit.
That's great, thank you.
Okay, yes, the second presentation this evening is from Los Angeles County Paramedic Captain Steve Powell, who is going to provide a presentation that outlines the paramedic response procedure for the city of Avalon. Captain Powell?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I have copies of the policy. But I just wanted, I was asked by Mr. Harvey to come and talk about the plan to move resources, paramedic resources specifically into Avalon, in the event that we're out on a, that the Baywatch crews are out on an assignment outside the city of Avalon. So, just a brief kind of background on what's going on. We have our staffing profile, we have two personnel on 24/7 stationed here across the street at the station. We have a fully equipped paramedic rescue boat and a rescue squad. We have two complete sets of equipment for responding whether we need to go by sea or by land, and that's some of the gear that we have on our apparatus. We have full advanced life support equipment on both pieces of equipment, SCUBA equipment, marine vessel rescue equipment, marine firefighting equipment, SAR equipment, as well as many other pieces of equipment. I just wanted to highlight a few of the basics. The available resources in Avalon, other than us, is the, of course, the Avalon Fire Department, the Los Angeles County Fire Department, personnel at Station 55, the Avalon Harbor Department, the search and rescue team, the Catalina Island Medical Center, and the LA County Sheriff's. So that's a list of the people that work with us to accomplish the mission of EMS, both inside Avalon and outside of Avalon. For a typical call inside the city, what'll happen typically is there'll be a 911 call to the Avalon Sheriff's Station, they'll dispatch, and this I'm talking specifically about EMS delivery, they'll dispatch the Fire Department, Avalon Fire Department, and us to respond to the call. We'll deliver the service. If it's in the harbor, it'll be, Avalon Harbor will be dispatched along with us to a boat, whether it's on a mooring or an anchor or right outside the harbor. If, and then Station 55 personnel, the engineer and the captain, will be dispatched as needed, and often they'll self-dispatch to come down and be extra resources for us. And we also have the search and rescue team that can be dispatched if we need more manpower. Outside the city of Avalon, we will get dispatched by the Coast Guard, by 911, by direct dispatch or monitoring Channel 16. We will respond by boat or by squad, depending on where the call is. 55 personnel will either come with us, or if we need to go to the interior, they'll respond with their own apparatus, whether it needs, whether they need a fire engine, or they can go with a Suburban, or whatever piece of equipment they need, depending on the call. Harbor resources, we'll dispatch them, and depending on the call, depending on their availability, they will, they will come as well. And then the SAR team, depending on the call as well. So those are, those are the resources that'll come outside the city. So, the move-up plan is basically what will happen if the Baywatch is assigned outside the city of Avalon for greater than an hour, an hour or greater, based on the captain's discretion on how long he thinks this call is gonna take. We will immediately move the unit from Baywatch Isthmus into Avalon, and it'll stage in Avalon. So if we take the boat out, for example, and the call is down the coast, and we're gonna be gone, okay? It could be an hour, may not be an hour, but if we suspect that this call could be an hour long, we will say, we'll dispatch the Isthmus to move them into town, and they will stage, and they will take our squad and respond by boat. If the Isthmus is unavailable, if there's multiple calls going on at the same time, we'll make a call to Command and Control, and we'll bring in a unit from the mainland. And it's, you know, if everything is just kind of happening at once, the unit that'll come in will be a boat, we could request a helicopter, just depending on what type of, what type of response we need. So that's the basics of it. I think that the other agencies, we all work very well together here to provide service in the city of Avalon. I think we've done it for 40 years. It's a model of how agencies can work together. We're also very fortunate that we have a hospital right here in the district that can handle 90% of the patients that we bring them, that we don't have to fly out. They're 24/7, they're right here, right down the street. We're very fortunate to have that, so we never have to leave the city to take people to a hospital or anything else. That's, that's the basics of it, how we move resources in if we're out of town.
Okay. Questions for Captain Powell?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for bringing the written procedure as well. Copies of that are available if anyone wants one, over here on the table.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Oral communications? Is there anybody who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda?
Jen Monroe, Recreation Department. I just have two quick announcements. One is that we currently are signing up youth that would like to play T-ball this season. The big sign-up day, which is also the Make the Teams, Hand Out Uniforms Day, is June 16th at 5:00 PM at Joe Machado Field. We'll be playing on Mondays, and that's open for ages 3 and 1/2 up to 4th grade, so basically under Little League age, or getting ready to play Little League age, all the way down to 3 and 1/2 year olds. So, we, we welcome everyone to sign up, and that's available here at City Hall or on our website, cityofavalon.com. And the other one is that there's a bike safety course that's gonna be held at the school, that's this Thursday, and it's a collaboration between the Avalon Sheriff's Department, Choices, and the City Rec Department. And we'll be doing bike safety information, some bike giveaways, helmet giveaways, little obstacle course, it's gonna be really fun. And that is, again, this Thursday at school, and it's for K through 5, 1:30 to 3 o'clock, and middle school from 3 to 4 o'clock. We'll see you then.
Great. Thank you.
Michael Quonse, 398 Ridley Terrace Road. I have a question, it's probably for Dennis and Ben. Now that the work is done in front of the Pancake Cottage, will the backside of Mount Ada go back to one-way? And when it does go back to one-way, could you notify golf carts, hotels, anybody who would be using that way, the community, that it will go back to one-way, so we don't get into the issues that we had the last time it went back to one-way? So it'd be nice to let the community know that you are doing that. That was just...
Good suggestion. We have some signage that we would need to update, some notification.
Was there a weight, was there a weight issue with vehicles, Dennis?
Mr. Jich, please come on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, the weight restrictions have been lifted. However, due to the current situation of some underground utilities, we're gonna be very mindful of heavy loads going down that area, and we're gonna develop a requirement for heavy loads to check in with the city, and might have alternate routes. As far as the one-way, Michael, I, that's a Island Company Road, and I'm sorry, I forgot to have them put it back, but we'll get on it. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jordan Monroe, Management Aid. I just wanted to announce to everyone that Assemblymember Bonnie Lowenthal is going to be visiting Catalina Island on Friday, June 20th. She's gonna be holding sidewalk office hours here in Avalon, so she's gonna be bringing her district to us, 'cause she knows that a lot of people can't make it over to her offices. So while they're here, she and her staff are gonna provide resources on consumer protection, state agency phone numbers, emergency preparedness, ways to save water, protecting your identity, legislative services, and they're gonna have a little space for parents to bring their kids, if you have to have your kid with you, or you get to have your kid with you. So they'll have a space there to help them. So it is gonna be an opportunity for a one-on-one visit with Assemblymember Bonnie Lowenthal to discuss issues that matter to you, and get assistance with state resources. So again, that's Friday, June 20th, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, right at, in front of the courthouse. So if you have any questions, you can get ahold of us here at City Hall, or visit her website, which is www.asmdc.org/lowenthal. And we have flyers up around town as well. It'll also be going in the newspaper for the next two weeks.
Great, thank you.
Any, is there appointments required for that?
No, it's just gonna be kind of a show-up. They're gonna be there and available, so if you have any concerns or needs or assistance from them, show up anytime between 11:00 and 4:00. I'm sure it'll be, depending upon how many people are there, you might have to wait a little bit, but it's less of a wait than if you had to travel over town. So we're very appreciative of their making an effort coming to us to help out our community.
Right. What, can you tell us, just for the public awareness, what kind of questions can they be asking Ms. Lowenthal? I mean, just the nature of what she represents, and what could she help us with, and the people?
Right, so she can assist with state resources, so like EDD or DMV as well, if you're having issues with those, or dealing with general questions that you may have regarding state issues that may be going on. They're gonna be submitting a larger write-up that'll be going out in the newspapers, not this week, but next week, and it'll kinda cover a little bit more detail about the full scope, or so you can prepare yourself of what they'll be doing, and we'll be sure to make that available as well, so in case you can kinda gauge what you need to be working on, but yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Roberta Black, 237 Sumner, also Catalina Lodge. I would like to see if there's a way we can have Edison re-figure how they are going to allocate the water. They say businesses, as an example, a hotel will get 20 gallons per night, per overnight guest, based on what you used in 2011, between, or between 12 and 13 is the base share. Well, it's very sketchy what anybody used, because I have documentation where they did not read meters, and went six months with guestimated billings, and then finally, after calling them month after month, they came out, read a meter, and said, "Oh, you only use three gallons estimate, or roughly, per day on five rooms." Well, 13 people plus an office use way more than three to four gallons per day. So my allocation for, at this point, for February of 15 is 2.63 gallons per day to accommodate 13 tourists overnight. So do I tell them the water's been turned off because Edison did not do their job and bill us correctly, read our meters correctly? Do I say it's turned off, and here's a half-liter of water, now I can book a room? And for the hotels that weren't operating, again, the outwater had nobody in from the end of October until spring break, they get their, it's gratis, they're gonna get 20 gallons per overnight guest, per night. So why are the rest of us suffering? We need to come up with another way, whether it's an equal amount for everybody, whatever your occupancy is on hotels, based at 50%, and then give you that amount. The same thing for residences. You have people that have blatantly used a lot of water, and they're gonna be fine, but the others that have been very water-conscious are now gonna try and figure out how they're even going to take a shower, because they've been using their gray water to water their plants. They haven't been running dishwashers. We need to come up with another way, because Edison has set us up big time. Even if it takes a moratorium on all new building, something needs to be done.
But the immediate need is so intense, and I think everybody's getting those allocations.
The variances. I think there's variances are being allowed to...
And those are gonna be subject to what? You have at least...
I don't know, we gotta contact Edison, but I know you could apply for a variance.
You can fill out the form, right, but it's gonna take, and see, that's the thing, I can fill out the form, and while they're considering it, then I get 20 gallons per night per guest, I get 10 times the amount.
I agree.
I mean, that's just insane.
It needs to be looked into. Maybe we could direct the city manager, maybe, to look into that, Ben, for us a little bit?
Yeah, I had to threaten them with PUC to get the water bills straightened out, then they did it to me again two months ago, 16 months later. And they're doing the same thing with the electricity on people. Read your meters, look at your bills. They're not taking readings, they're just saying, "Oh, you use this amount," but there's no meter reading.
I have a meeting with Ron Hyde on Thursday, as a matter of fact, so I can report back to you guys afterwards.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and maybe we could have Ron Hyde come back in here and answer some more questions for us, so that we can be a lot more clear on this, because I think there's a lot of other people that are feeling the same frustrations on the same matter. It does seem a bit confusing, and there's a lot of paperwork involved, and there's a three to four-week period on every variance request that you fill out, and sometimes that variance request will vary from month to month on whether or not that's a fair allotment to some people, 'cause some people will get 30 gallons in one month, and they'll get three gallons the next month, and 30, and three, so, you know, every other month, you're gonna have to do a variance. So I think maybe we could try to find a better way to do this, it's a little more...
They just need to do an equitable...
If I could, you need to either come to the podium and direct things through the chair, if I could, please, so the viewing audience can hear, and so the audience maybe... Thank you.
They could just do an equitable allocation. If you have four members in your household, then each residence gets so much per occupant. Each business, if it's a hotel or motel, whatever, or vacation cottage, you get so much per occupant. You don't go based on the usage from another year. We were shut down, our part of our rooms were shut down for remodeling. The outwater had nobody in. I mean, you just, you start looking at that, and they don't, you can't take apples and oranges and say they're the same, and that's what they're trying to do.
This is as serious as the situation gets, so we really have to be clear in understanding the protocol that needs to be met by us as the consumers, and what we expect of Edison. And we do expect them to come forward and make things clear and understandable and reasonable for people, so...
Right, well, that's why I'm bringing it up, because as the city council, the mayor, you have more pull than us as individuals. I've been fighting them since 2010, and I have a stack of bills showing and documentation. I have a personal contact phone number because of all the billing atrocities they've done with us. They actually ended up writing off one month's electrical from September that they didn't bill me until February, when I kept calling and saying, "Where's my electrical bill?" "Oh, we have it." "Well, can I have it? Can I know the amount that I owe?" "Oh, don't worry about it." Then they send it to you in February, and what they did is they put it, they gave me one 30-day reading, and then they took 90 days and said, "That was a 30-day reading." And I said, "No, you didn't even put it in the tier structure." And the gal goes, "Well, what's a tier structure?" I said, "Well, then you need to get a new job if you don't know what a tier structure is. I'm supposed to be talking to a supervisor that handles billing questions?" And her response, and everybody's gonna love this one, is, "Oh, I'm just checking to see if you know what it is."[1631.13][1631.13](laughter) That's what Edison thinks of all of us as consumers, that we are total idiots. And we're not. We can't keep getting run over the way they've been doing it. If you look at your bills between, I think it's November of 11, no, February of 12 through November of 12, most of those won't have a water reading, a meter reading. They'll just say used X gallons per day average. Go back and look at your bills.
Thank you. I think we are frustrated here, as residents, as well as...
Oh, I know residents.
A governing body, because by, you know, there is a helplessness feeling with this, and I've been getting some complaints also about bills and no response, and then having to deal with the mainland and no response, and it's very, very frustrating, the customer service that isn't being given.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's a definite lack of customer service, and that's why I do have a direct contact now if there's any more questions with our account, which there was 30 days later, and she got another call. But, anyway.
We'll pursue this with vigor.
Okay.
Absolutely.
It does need to be addressed, though, because otherwise, like, as an example, for us, we're gonna have to shut down six months of the year.
It's as serious as it gets.
Well, there'll be no bed tax for the city, for one.
No, it's a big deal.
That could be a big one.
Thank you, Roberta.
Any other oral communications? Okay, we'll go to the consent calendar.
Yes, Mayor, you've got eight items on your consent calendar this evening, starting off with actions from both the May 6th and the May 20th meeting, the Mayor Pro Tem will notice. Expenditures in the amount of warrants, $650,000, payroll, $217,000, and an EFT of approximately $54,000 for total expenditures of $922,119.47. You have an item proposing to establish a time limit on newly created pure dinghy dock space. This is in an effort to enhance the experience for some visiting boaters at the recommendation of our harbor master. You have an item pertaining to community digital signage that's proposed for Vaughn Supermarket, brought to you by the Recreation Department. The proposal to purchase a vacuum excavator. This is a purchase of a machine that is in like-new condition, that happens to be on the island, that will assist the city in a variety of ways. The renewal of a tidlin's lease with a smaller area, and the... a tidlin's lease with a smaller area, and the third amendment to the development agreement with Hamilton Pacific, wherein adopting the consent counter would adopt the ordinance. You heard this at your prior meeting. And then finally, a change order for a proposed new staircase as part of the lower terrace project.
And council, what are your wishes?
I'd like to pull four and eight.
Oh, I'm sorry, what are they?
Public question.
Oh, does the public want anything removed? Still far so good. Okay, Richard?
I'd like to have four and eight.
Joe?
Number eight, number eleven, and number twelve, please.
Eleven, twelve, not on the consent.
That's not on the consent, that's later.
I'd like number eight, please.
Okay. So shall we move on the other items? Is there a motion?
Move staff on one to three, five, six, and seven.
It's our second?
Second.
All who's in favor? All eyes. Item number four?
Yes, if I could ask Jen Monroe to please come up to speak on the community digital signage consideration. There is a staff report that goes along with this, which you'll see, so Jen, thank you.
Yes, thank you. This item is back before you at the request of the council. We presented this twice in the past and had good response the first time, so we brought you some numbers the second time, and it was not approved to move forward at that time with this proposal. And what the proposal is, is to install digital signage. Our proposed location was at the Vaughn's supermarket on Metropole Avenue. It would be in the, between the transom and the main doors, so when you're in the checkout aisle, you would look up above the doors and see digital signage. So it would be community events, what's happening on the upcoming city council meeting, those kind of things, whatever we deemed that we would want to put on this community signboard could go up there. It's managed remotely, so we could manage it from here at City Hall, at any of our computers, on any smartphone. We could update it instantly, and it could go up there. The program is from a company called Easy Start, and it's the hardware, which basically looks like a small box, like a Roku box or a small cable box, that would physically be at the location and just requires internet, which Vaughn's has had installed for us in anticipation of this going in, in that location. And then the screen to put it on, which is basically like a big TV. So we're recommending a seventy-inch TV for that location after measuring the area and doing a mock-up. And so the cost for the program with the hardware and the software, a one-time cost is, was one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars, and then the screen, after pricing it out, was estimated at two thousand dollars. So it would be thirty-four fifty for the entire process, and it would be managed through the recreation department. The, in the past, it didn't require council approval, because the expenditure is below five thousand dollars, but we wanted to see what the council's pleasure was, and it was not approved at that time. So I know that, Annie, you were interested in it, seeing it back here on the agenda.
Yeah, thank you.
It was not approved before?
It was not approved at that time.
Well, I, also in the staff report, I noticed that we could sell, I sell a little bit of advertising on there to help recoup the cost.
Correct, and our first, yeah, in our first proposal, which is what, basically what we would be asking for again for you, is that we would be interested in selling, basically advertising for it. So if, as an example, Kid Ventures wanted to do a yard sale or advertise for their upcoming event, they could pay five dollars for the week for their thing to run, their ad to run, and then that would be a way that we could recoup the cost of the hard cost for this, so...
Did you also say, you can have more than one screen, so you can have more than one, it's not like, it's not like watching the cable channel.
Right, so... Yes, I think that you got a diagram of what it would look like in your agenda, but I also have an example if you didn't get to see that. And really, it can be configured any number of ways, because it's connected to the internet. You can live stream even, so you could have half the screen showing the local Avalon basketball game up at the school gym, and the other half going through all the announcements that you're having. You could program it for as long as you'd like them to show, so if you, you know, want it to just be quick blurbs, or if you want it to be more in-depth information, you can have it split any number of ways. So on the bottom, it could stream what the current weather conditions are, or voting conditions. It could have the time in the corner of the screen, so people, encouraging people to look up at the screen, any, any number of things. So did you all get a chance to see what that diagram would look like?
Comments?
Yeah, here's my take, and we turned it down before. My take is the congestion in Vaughn's. I mean, I don't know when the last time anybody's been in there, around Friday at four o'clock, when you're trying to get through the line and get checked out through there. My concerns are people standing there watching it slows everything down. It just seems like there'd be a better place than Vaughn's somewhere, and I, I'm not sure where that would be, but right now, and one of the reasons I voted it down last time was, I don't think that's a very good place for it in Vaughn's, because of all the congestion and slowing everything down right there on the doorway as you're going out. It's small enough as it is. I think it's just gonna add to the congestion of the store and the business, and that's one of the reasons I wanted to pull it and just talk about it.
Yeah, certainly. There definitely is two ways to look at it. One is that it will either add to the congestion, or it's congested already, and people are just passively waiting there, and instead of reading the tabloid magazines, they would look up and find out what's happening, you know, in town. But, but you are right. Definitely, we, I guess that may be one thing that we wouldn't know until it's in, but...
Vaughn's didn't seem to be very concerned with the congestion. That wasn't a concern of theirs?
It was not a concern. They're very excited. They, they like, really like the idea of being a community partner on this, so...
Well, and my other concern is that, you know, with the media only coming, you know, with our local newspapers only coming out as, as they do weekly, sometimes the community gets things kind of last moment, and I, I think you all know that there's a number of us who want people to get notification as soon as possible that something's coming. So I just thought this would be a way to expedite and get more, get a larger variety of people also than those that just happen to get on the internet and follow us that way, or whatever. So it's up to the pleasure of the council.
Do, what type of advertising are you looking at? Is it nonprofit advertising or business advertising?
We could take direction from the council as you would like to see it, if you'd like us to move forward. We originally had envisioned it as community events only, similar to banners on the front street, where we don't allow commercial banners currently. It's, it's community events only. So that's, that's what we were envisioning, but it would, could be something where you're having a private yard sale on your own property, and you want to advertise for that. We would even be open to allowing something like that, where you would just come up and pay City Hall and give us the details, and we just type it on in, and then it runs, you know?
A community bulletin board.
But, community-related and non...
Not a community advertising.
And non-commercial.
That's what, then it becomes an advertising board, not a community board.
It's a bulletin board, but there just, as a way to derive a little bit of revenue, it's recommended that you consider a nominal fee for those postings.
Maybe we could consider having it in another place, like maybe the Chamber of Commerce or out at the mall. I know there's a kiosk out there advertising some of the local businesses, but I kinda like the idea, but I definitely am listening to Councilman Hernandez's point of view, which, that is a kinda congested area, but...
Is there a way that we could try it there for a couple of months, and if it does turn out to be a problem, we could pull it and find a different location?
Or if maybe there's a local business that might be interested in having it in their window, and maybe we could give them, give them some, some advertising for themselves. There are some, some kind of perk in that way, some, somewhere that's high, high traffic and high visual.
Just the idea originally behind this, just so you know, is that we were trying to think of a way to get the word out and get it out quickly, as, as the mayor mentioned, but also think of a location to put it where there, people aren't having to go out of their way, because people are already potentially not going out of their way to look in the newspaper, or look on the web, city website, that kind of thing. So we're trying to make it the easiest for people as possible to get information. So that's just one thing in thinking of a location that you would want to consider, where, where people often already go to look for information, or to go on their daily routines. That's one of the reasons why we put Vaughn's out there as the, as one option. Several other locations are private, privately owned locations that we didn't, haven't moved forward with...
We could certainly be directed...
We can check other locations for you if you're interested in...
We haven't looked for other locations, just in case this didn't go through or something?
Well, we've just, we had discussed, you know, in the lobby at City Hall, but if you're at City Hall, you probably already got the information from the city. But we would certainly be open to any suggestions that you would have of locations.
Well, we could, we could certainly be directed and happy to talk to the island company about the arcade, for instance. We'd be happy to do that. So we could, we could, and I can think of a couple of spots in there that might be, so we'd be happy to do that.
Okay, so we wanna table it till we hear something from...
If, no, if you wanna table, that's fine.
Can I, can I just make one comment?
Sure, Michael.
I think if Vaughn's thought that it was a problem, they wouldn't be allowing us to do this. It's the one, it is the one location that everybody's gonna go to. You're standing there in line anyways, so it's not gonna hold you up. But I really, I really honestly think that if Vaughn's had a problem with it, they would not even let Jen approach them about it. I know we went through this twice before, and one of the comments was, "Well, it's on, it's on cable." Well, not everybody gets cable. There's a lot of people who are on Dish and don't get cable and can't see the, the announcements. So I think this is a great way of getting to the community, getting the information out that needs to go out there. But, but bottom line is, I think if Vaughn's thought it was a problem, they would've said, "No, this isn't gonna work for us."
Thank you, Michael. It's the pleasure.
Are you tabling any of them?
I don't know. Well, I'm out looking for directions.
I, that was just a big sway for me right there. Thank you, Michael. I was just not in favor of this because of the congestion, and I am one of those people who, you know, is very frustrated when I go in and wanna get something and quickly get out. Unfortunately, there is no go into Vaughn's and get out quickly. So I do appreciate that it's inside, it's not outside, and if Vaughn's, it is on Vaughn's property, and it is, if it remains a community service-related board and not an advertising board, not a, a commercial advertising board, then I would be in favor of, at least, at the very least, giving it a try.
Okay.
No, I just, it's, I think, I applaud the mayor and her desire to get as much information out to the general public as we can, because in the past, we maybe didn't get enough information out, but I think we're going at a beastmeat, and I think we need a plan to cover most, all of the avenues that are available to us. Vaughn's is an avenue, Facebook's an avenue, you know, our website's an avenue, and I think we need a cohesive plan. I think we're just going at a beastmeat, and that's why, for the time being, I'd like to hold it over until we have opportunity to present a plan.
Well, we have started researching the social media plan.
Sure, we could certainly be directed to go forward with that effort, come back with, and have a comprehensive approach, and that, that's, happy to do that as well.
I know that locations possibly would ever...
And look at another location, perhaps, that would fit into that program.
Give you guys some options and explain some other ways we're gonna disseminate information.
Okay.
Can, can I just ask that maybe we throw into that the possibility of a, of an app with push notifications? Or is that not, is that bigger picture?
Well, I, I think that, if I may, council member, we're, we're considering some, a continuation, if you will, of the IT upgrade as part of the next fiscal year budget, and that would probably broaden the effort a little bit. We, we could, you know, considering the timeframe, maybe that's just as well. I'm just thinking it's June now. Come back to you in July as part of that with a comprehensive approach. We could, we could do that, and specifically budget for an app as part of that effort. We, we could do that.
I was just curious as to how much it would cost to do, and is it feasible? How long would it take?
We're gonna be bringing forward...
And then you have people that can actually opt in or opt out.
Sure. We, we're gonna be bringing forward to you some suggestions for IT in the next fiscal year, and that was part of what we were gonna recommend, anyway. So would that be the direction, then?
Yes.
So, so if I could understand, maybe the mayor, if anyone wants to restate your motion so that we get this correct, please?
It wasn't motion, it was direction.
Direction, okay. Come back with, with a comprehensive policy.
Create a more comprehensive plan for communication, using all available resources.
Annie, the time for Mr.?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So we're, if you don't, if council doesn't mind, we're gonna hold off on, on item number eight, and we're going to bring forward Mr. Dave Ferion from CCRNR.
So, Mayor, are we moving to general business?
Yes, and moving to general business. Item number fourteen.
Okay, so I'm also gonna ask Mr. JH to be available, too. Item number fourteen is a proposal to amend CRNR, also known as Avalon Environmental Services, for a monthly street sweeping service contract. We have discussed this item with CRNR. As council may recall, the city has an aging street sweeping machine that is proven to be of late, especially fairly unreliable. CRNR has come forward with a proposal wherein we could have street sweeping services, including the cost of the machine, the maintenance, and the labor for three thousand dollars a month. It would be for a twelve-month period. It has a sixty-day quit clause, if you will, by written notice. It would be month-to-month from there forward. Mr. JH has provided you with a cost analysis. It's a hard copy, which you may have seen next to your materials. It has a city seal on the top. It's a memo from him, wherein you'll see that he's calculated the cost of the city continuing to street sweep, including the labor, the fuel, the parts, at around seventy-six thousand dollars a year. So that's considerable reduction of what we're spending now, and of course, this cost does not include what it would take to either rent or purchase something to replace our current street sweeper, which we feel is really quite past its lifespan. We're recommending as part of the proposal to keep, as part of the proposal, should the council decide to amend CRNR, CRNR's contract, we would retain the existing street sweeper. The reason we would do that would be for backup, or for emergency, or special event purposes, but we would keep it in somewhat stable health by not continuing to use it on a weekly basis. So, Mr. Ferion from CRNR is in the back row right there, and Mr. JH is right over here. Either one can answer questions on this. Please let us know how you'd like to proceed.
Do you have questions?
Yeah, I do have a question.
Mr. Ferion, or Dennis?
Or Dennis, either, either one of them.
Or you can be a duet.
And just for point of clarification, I, I misspoke. I said there was a sixty-day separation. It's actually ninety days, written notice, forgive me. That's what your staff report reflects.
Yes, yes, Dennis. I had one question. Years ago, when the little street sweepers were in town, they had the metal, street sweepers on the broom, and they used to fall off, and kids would get, get them and throw them at each other. I think at one time, the city was even sued one year, where the metal, metal came off the brushes, and, and kid threw it, hit him in the eye, and blah, blah, blah. Well, my question to them would be, is it a nylon brush, or is it a metal brush that you're gonna use for your street sweeper? Do you know, Adam?
Councilmember Hernandez, David Ferion with CRNR. We use both. We do have metal and both nylon, so we can, if, if that's the pleasure of the council, we can make sure that that unit has nylon.
I think that, I would like that, if we could do that, the nylon, if we could.
Okay, we can, yeah, we can. I'm not sure what it was shipped with. The unit is already here on the island. Due to start on Thursday, if this is approved tonight. It is a propane unit, identical to what we run in our refuse equipment, so clean burning fuel. So, but we'll check that out tomorrow. Thanks.
That was my question from, for me. Anybody else?
Yeah, do we know exactly how, the width of, of the, of the piece of machinery? Is it, it's gonna be as big as the other sweeper, or smaller? Can you tell me whether or not it might fit down our alleys?
The, we, we are proposing to build a unit specifically for, um, the sweep here, but initially, we brought over one of the units we already have. So, I think there are some alleys that it may fit down, others that it may have a difficult time fitting down. The newer unit we're proposing to build and bring here would fit down the alleys. That's the idea.
Okay.
Okay.
And, the question, Dennis, is it also able to swing in and out of the, the vehicles that are on the street? Is it capabilities to do that?
Yes.
Pretty, pretty simple?
What I saw, I don't know what the new unit is, I haven't seen that.
Okay.
The one that's here now, yes.
That was also a concern, some people, how close it could get when vehicles are there, go around them, come back and sweep the streets.
The alleys are gonna be a concern, though. We have some pretty poor, um, surface, asphalt surface, and goes down to seven foot, ten inches, and a couple of spots with telephone poles and things.
Gas meters?
That's gonna be tough.
Because it does say, "and paved alleys" in the contract, so, in the agreement, so...
If we have paved alleys.
I mean, is, is my alley paved on, is our alley paved on this council? I guess that's partially.
Partially.
Partially?
Most of the alleys were paved, and I tried to get some information as to why they're falling apart, and it seems as though, uh, probably a combination of ordnance as far as materials that were used.
Mm-hmm.
They need repair. It's on our, it's on our structure list for you all to prove a little later.
So, if he doesn't come and sweep my alley next week, I shouldn't be concerned?
Yeah.
I mean, cut him a little slack.
Correct.
And what about the route? Are you going to use the existing route that the city has?
Yes. Uh, we're gonna utilize the no parking signs on the various streets.
Okay.
CR, CRNR is gonna sweep, do a, a good job utilizing the streets that are closed on the specific days.
Okay.
And that's five days a week we're doing that, or?
It depends if he can get it in four. It's four to five.
And the hours?
Um, depends upon how, how fast this machine's gonna go. I'm not sure of the new unit.
I'm just thinking in consideration of residents, when you're backing up those vehicles, generally, you have the, the backup indicators, and they're quite loud, and at six o'clock in the morning, that's...
That's bad.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm pretty confident with this, uh, this machine's gonna be less intrusive than our current machine, and, um, there should not be any back end. It should be forward progress.
Okay.
If any backing up is necessary, it's not gonna work.
Right. And the other thing, if, if one of those days is Friday, I'd sure like it to be out on Friday before the visitors all get here on the weekend. Would be nice to have our city cleaned up before the weekend starts.
I agree.
Instead of Thursday and stopping on Friday. If, if all possible, I'd love to see it out on Fridays.
I agree. Yeah, we'll, we'll see if we can work with CRNR, make that, uh, happen. He, he says yes.
I have a question for staff.
Yes.
Just wanna ask, if it's okay to ask a question.
It is okay.
Oh, thank you. I'm still confused, why we're amending the existing CRNR agreement, we're not just doing a separate street sweeping agreement?
You can blame me, I think, on this one. I, I thought this was the more expeditious manner in which to put together an agreement. We already had all the contract information contained in the, uh, agreement with CRNR, rather than creating a, a similar but different document. Uh, that's why we went this route. It also required less staff time to do that, um, in general, though the city attorney's office works very quickly. If they are to put together an entire brand-new contract, it does take more effort than an amendment, uh, so you can blame me for that.
I'm not blaming, it's just, the solid waste agreement has nineteen years to go?
Mm-hmm.
No.
But this is a...
It was a twenty-year agreement, wasn't it?
It's a twenty-year agreement, huh?
No, it's a five-year agreement.
It's a five.
Oh, the old solid, this is the new solid waste, which is a ten-year agreement with two five-year extensions.
Still twenty years.
Okay.
Five and five.
And this is just for one year?
The street sweeping component.
I'm just, it just...
It's a one-year contract. It's a one-year contract. After that, it's month-to-month.
Whose request was that? I mean, who, I mean, who would?
But this, this was something that we worked on together. We thought, you know, it's not different from other agreements that, you know, you have a twelve-month duration, then it moves to a monthly.
Okay.
So, it potentially could go up every year, right?
You, you could reconsider it, absolutely.
Reconsider what we have here. It can also go up a couple every year, right? Be on the one-year. Doesn't the, doesn't the solid waste franchise have a CPI comp in it?
Yes, and this one would too.
This one will.
Same conditions as the company's service fee, which is tied to a CPI.
Did, did we address Councilmember Hernandez's question, though? Did we?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I wasn't sure if we got it.
I wanted to acknowledge, um, there's been, um, some inquiries from the public about, which I hope this, this will reassure them, that when they have to, um, move their vehicles, um, and it's a day that, uh, the street sweeper's supposed to come by, it will come by now, because a lot of people are complaining that, well, I had to move my car and my street's still dirty. So, hopefully, this will, um, reassure people that, yes, we're gonna clean the streets now, and, um, we'll be, um, a little more consistent in, um, in our diligence towards keeping the streets, uh, clean, and that we're not just, um, making people move, so it, it's a ticket trap, because that's not the case at all. It's, it's the fact that we, we do try to clean the streets on a regular basis, it's just the mechanical breakdowns up to this point, um, have, um, kinda been a monkey wrench in the system. So, now, um, hopefully, this, this will definitely get taken care of on a regular basis.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Do we have any public comments?
Do we have public comments? I keep forgetting that problem.
Um, oh, yeah, I've got something else to ask. So, what impact will this have on, on our city employees? Um, because there's somebody who, who had this job, and, um, now, will this make the rest of our, our crew? We're gonna keep the, the same amount of employees, correct?
That's correct.
So, now, we'll be able to, um, take this particular employee and, and, um, and put him in another department or similar department, and, and, and we'll be able to be a little more resourceful?
I think it's even better than that. Number, number one, no layoffs as part of this proposal. Number two, I think, you know, that there were a core group of people that not only, not only the person that was operating the street sweeper when it was operational, but the people that were hand-sweeping the streets now can be permanently relieved of that duty, and we can deploy them to something that's probably a better use of their skill and expertise.
So, we will create, um, a little more...
More resources.
More resources, yeah. More, more resourceful, um, community, and, okay, great. That sounds great.
Okay.
Can I just add one question?
Could you come up to the microphone, please?
On the hours of operation?
Need to please approach, thank you.
On the hours of operation of the street sweeper? Okay, the signs are posted to have the vehicles moved between eight AM and noon. The last couple of years when the street sweeper's been going, sometimes he was out there at six o'clock, six fifteen in the morning. The vehicles weren't moved. So, if we could keep it in conjunction with the hours...
I think, I think we got a comment on, on the time of that, and that's what we're gonna work to do.
Yeah, no, that's what I was just saying, because they had said that the noise wouldn't be a factor. They never really addressed that it would be the hours that they were posted, and that's all I was just asking if it could possibly be...
That would be our intention, and if we, if there were any hours that had to be modified, the public would be notified, and we, and we would put together appropriate signage. We would not want street sweeping hours inconsistent with what's the posted signage.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Mary in that city, three twenty-six Eucalyptus. Does this include Eucalyptus Street?
Dennis, does, you want to respond through the podium, please?
Uh, no, we didn't take that street into consideration as a private road, my understanding?
It's a street, city street.
Well, we'll ask CRNR to get that as well. Fortunately, very little traffic, so, uh, very little need of sweeping, and if we can get the gates open for them, we'll ask them to hit it, uh, maybe once a week. Shouldn't take very long.
I was wondering about Eucalyptus, because it doesn't have a gutter, you know, you just have, it goes right up to the homes, is that, is, nothing spays out that way, so that it would end up in your yard instead of, you know, in, on your house and...
Yeah, it's more or less, uh, sloping downward rather than towards the home.
Perhaps a suggestion, we can look at this and come back as part of it. I think that...
There's a little bit of a gutter, but just to reconfirm, um, what the resident of Eucalyptus said, there's a couple of other people that were concerned about their street not being, or kind of getting pushed aside or on the back burner as far as getting clean. So, I think what we can reconfirm to, to the resident is that maybe we can be a little more diligent in putting some, um, attention to that street and cleaning it up, even if we have to do it. Send a guy up there, um, like, once a week, or, um, every so often to, to sweep it, if we can't seem to get the, uh, street sweeper down there, because as, as everybody knows, Eucalyptus has a lot of tables, chairs, barbecues, bikes, wheelchairs.
Yeah.
It's got a lot of activity down there, a lot of things on the street. It may or may not be legal, but either way, that's, that's just a, that's how we've handled Eucalyptus.
Right.
It's kind of like a really people-friendly, uh, street, so...
Yes.
Maybe we'll try to keep your street a little cleaner.
The CRNR, CRNR and Public Works has, uh, decided to, uh, work the kinks out as we get going, and that's something we can certainly work on, and see what is lacking, or what may be getting too much attention. But, it's gonna be a work in progress the first couple of months.
And we'll come back and give you an update.
Great. Thank you.
It's my guess that every owner on Eucalyptus would be delighted if once in a while the street were cleaned, even if it were sporadic, because it is, as it stands, it rarely ever gets cleaned. So, once in a while, or some kind of program, and I realize that some of the street was paved right up to the curbs, which means some things could go right into your front door. So, I think maybe if somebody looked at it and gave us some kind of schedule, it would be nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
More motion?
Is there a motion?
Authorized amendment to the Avalon Environmental Services contract to include street sweeping services of a yearly, at a monthly cost of three thousand dollars.
Is there a second?
My second.
More public comment? Oh, we're good. Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Okay, and now we'll go back to the consent calendar. Item number eight.
Yes. Give me one moment, Mayor. Okay, yes. Item number eight is a proposed change order for a new staircase as part of the lower terrace road project, um, due to some complications with the deteriorated terrace, excuse me, deteriorated staircase that was removed, and some prevailing wage requirements. The cost for this did exceed what we initially thought. It's approximately seventeen thousand dollars to add this staircase. Uh, Mr. Jehich would be happy to provide you with any details that you may need on this proposal.
In your staff report, you have photos of the proposed stairs, and same type and materials that were used on, um, the zip line. At, at the Scottsdale Beach is where I took those photos. Excuse me. Uh, the original set of stairs, uh, to our amazement, when we went to, uh, remove them, fell apart. They were just deteriorated, and they kept getting, getting painted over, and they were just not able to be relocated. Although there's been a lot of controversy about the amount of stairs, uh, the, the contractor's plans included the replacement of one set of stairs. However, now, uh, he can't. He needs to construct a complete new set of stairs. We've had a couple of different quotes. We're, uh, still working on it. It, uh, it looks like at this point in time, it's gonna be around fifteen thousand instead of seventeen-five. Uh, at the time that we wrote the staff report, we had to be sure that contractor wasn't gonna mark it up, which he is not, and, uh, so we're, we're looking at around fifteen thousand for this new Douglas fir treated, um, stairway system with a handrail on one side, to be safe. The controversy I was talking about before is, uh, people wanted other stairs installed in the middle and on the far side, but, uh, to be a bit frugal, we wanted to just do what was originally planned, and install these stairs closer to the church area where they were before construction started. Any questions?
So, the egress with the fire department, everything was okay with that?
Yes.
With that, with the, with the stairways being further towards the church?
Yes. Uh, Mike is here, but, um...
That's good.
We both, we both wanted to see it go in.
Okay. Does that price include gold, gold plating?
I know, it's, uh, it's really something that's, uh, Davis Bacon prevailing wage rates and, and, uh, as you know, the cost of, uh, barge material over here.
Right. So, when are they gonna start this, Dennis?
Well, uh, they can start, uh, pretty quickly.
Okay.
Happy to report that, uh, we're gonna start our paving operations on Monday, Monday and Tuesday, which is a little ahead of schedule. And then, then we got some guard rail to put in, and then, we're gonna give the contractor a little extension of time to install these, uh, stairs.
Well...
If they're approved.
On that same project, is the lighting and everything, all that stuff been taken care of and all that?
Uh, no, Edison still needs to, uh, replace, uh, light and a pole, and we had a...
Any timeframe on that before we start paving? Or do you want us to dig up a bit a minute later?
It would go behind the new wall.
Oh, would it go behind the wall?
Yes, yes, sir. It's not gonna be within the roadway.
So, won't interfere with the paving and all that?
Correct.
Did we consider taking bids on, on a, on a concrete staircase or a metal staircase? I mean, can we try different materials, just to see what the prices are gonna be? Because I remember these last staircases, uh, they fell apart pretty quick. I mean, they were replaced a couple times, weren't they?
A long time ago.
They may, they may have been, but, uh, this, uh, concrete would probably cost perhaps triple. Um, metal, I did not check, I'm not sure. Concrete and, yeah, the concrete in area would cost a lot with prevailing wages.
Do you, do you think that that would be fair to say that a majority of the costs associated with this is the fact that we have to pay prevailing wage?
Yes.
And it's all, it's pretty labor-intensive to build the stairs?
It is, uh, making all the treads.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, I could, uh, if you needed the information later, get, get you the percentage of, uh, difference of prevailing wage, but the Douglas fir treated material's very expensive as well.
Yeah, we have, we have one of the best stonemasons around, working for the city of Avalon, in, um, Matt McBride, and I, I'd be interested in seeing what, uh, what kind of a bid he might be able to put into it. And we might just be better off doing this ourselves, um, if, if, if at all possible. Um, I, I think it'd be worth looking into, and then possibly checking into what it would cost to have a prefabricated metal staircase, um, up there, just because the, the wear and tear on wood in this town, and then we're gonna need to maintenance it on a regular basis, and, uh, and, um, just repaint it or, um, restain it, or reseal it, so... If I could just add, because the project is more than five thousand dollars, we have to publicly bid it. We have to go out to bid, and if we publicly bid it, we're probably looking at, uh, two months, uh, period, 'cause you have to follow all these state rules and stuff like that. So, it's not like, it's not, unfortunately, it's not an instance where you can just go
that. So it's not like, unfortunately, it's not an instance where you can just go out and ask for bids. You have to go through the public process, especially like we did with the snack stand at Joe Machado Field. It just takes a long time.
What's the timeframe that we're looking at for the proposed staircase?
This one we're asking for now?
Yes. When are we going to start?
He can construct it. It'll take him two weeks to construct it.
And start time?
He's going to start after he gets the roadway opened. I'd prefer to give the residents their new road and to work on that. Pardon me?
Which is how long?
We're looking at the third week in June if you don't hold me to it.
Yeah, no.
What do we hold you to?
By the end of June. You should have the new road.
But this was all part of the original plan and part of the potential of the original bid process that we already went through with Boulder. So essentially, there was the thought that maybe we wouldn't do this, and then now it's been determined that we really need to put the stairs back. So we've already gone through the bidding process. We've already chosen a contractor for the job.
That's correct.
This is essentially just adding to what we were originally going to do.
And the only thing I would say is, and again, you never know what's going to happen when you go out to bid, but part of the original bid and the contract with Boulder did include stair work. And so their cost already included part of that, and then this is for additional work because they have, they just have to start from scratch. But they're already, so the cost, this is already into their bid. This is an additional cost. If you went out to bid it again, my experience has been is that if someone's not mobilized and they don't have all the cost already, part of it paid in the other contract, it's going to be, it's going to be more.
I might add, I brought to you in the staff report that it was 17,500, and that's what it would cost. However, I'm getting a credit back from Boulder Construction. Their original contract required them to move a set of stairs, which is about $1,500 to crane it over. So I'm pretty sure we're going to get the cost down around 15,000. And he agreed not to mark it up, which saves us 15%.
Okay.
So it's entirely up to you. If you have any more questions? Ollie?
Motion.
Ollie?
Thank you very much, yes.
I will entertain.
Allow staff to execute a change order in the amount not to exceed 15,000 for Boulder Construction.
Is that
I'll second it.
I'm sorry, who gave the second? Is that you, Richard?
Yes, ma'am.
What, go ahead. Call for the vote?
All ayes.
You have nothing about the news.
Okay.
General business.
Yes, mayor, we've got six items, well, I guess now five, pardon me, on general business since we already took one out of order. Item number nine is a consideration of adding to the Avalon Municipal Code, a section that is required by state law for the designation of zones for emergency shelters. This state law was adopted back in 2007, so we are coming into compliance with that law. If you have specific questions about this, I would defer to either our planning director or our city attorney. Mayor Proton?
Because the church that I attend is primarily concerned with emergency housing, and they're considering that at a meeting next Sunday, I respectfully request that we hold this over and let them have a chance to review the ordinance to see how that would impact what their plans are.
We can do that. If that's the direction of council?
Council to hold over item number nine?
Absolutely. The only thing I would say is if anyone is here tonight
Speak on behalf of that.
Wants to speak on this that won't be able to speak on it at the next meeting. Seeing none?
Pursue.
Can I just ask that we not get an additional copy next meeting?
If you get it electronically?
No need to make it. No need to make copies for the next meeting. For a packet.
Ma'am, if you get it electronically?
I'm hanging on to mine, yeah. We can throw them in our basket.
Okay, item number 10.
Yes, mayor, item number 10 is a consideration of requests from staff to consider the future of the proposed Catalina Island Grand Prix insofar as it relates to the proposed obtaining of regulatory permits. Council has provided city staff with direction to pursue a multi-year effort requiring appropriate permits to go along with that. We are aware at this time that the impacted private property owners are interested in a single-year effort currently. However, we are close to the goal line, if you will, as far as obtaining the regulatory permits and have expended a considerable amount of time and effort doing that so far this year. So we're wondering if you would like us just to pursue and complete that effort in the event that we are able to come forward later at a future date, not in 2014, with a multi-year proposal. I don't know if any of that makes sense to you, but we're wondering what your direction would be on that, and this is what we're doing with the side.
And because we're dealing with the pursuit of regulatory approvals, and only regulatory approvals tonight, you can consider the fact that we're looking at, we would prefer a five-year, we are seeking a five-year permit. But because we're not talking about entering into an agreement tonight with the island company, but just the pursuit of regulatory permits, that council members Hernandez and McGugan Cassidy can participate in this discussion.
Well, starting. Oh, you're going to leave us?
No, we don't have to.
No, they don't have to. No, no, because we're not talking about an agreement with.
Okay. Yeah, this is a shame that an agreement can't be reached, and I sure understand a lot of it. I think the island company has been very clear that they have stated they would, they could only give us, they told us two years ago that they would only give us one year on the race. So, when we were talking about it, I basically, and we got another note from, email from Mr. Harold the other day, you know, saying, you know, if we're, new concerns about the new layout shows the motorcycles crossing blue line streams, you know, four times, so it would require Army Corps of Engineers. And I don't know that we have done any of that. The course travels through a white hold area and will require Coastal Commission approval, and have we begun the process, and he believes it will take at least a year. And
If I could, on some of, and we want to forgive the fact that we did not respond officially to some of Mr. Harold's questions, but we do have answers to all those. We don't believe that the Coastal Commission permit will be required, nor do we believe the Army Corps, the Army Corps of Engineers refused, I believe, to weigh in on this.
The Army Corps of Engineers already looked at this and said, this is not significant. We're not going to, we're not going to do it, Coastal Commission, because the motocross area is outside the Coastal Commission. When we did it last time, the Coastal Commission did not have a problem with the motorcycles traveling on the hour trail. So they did not, last time, have any problems with it. This time, it's actually less of an impact. And again, the motocross area is within the boundaries of the city, and the city has already approved a local coastal permit for the race with even greater motocross than is under the revised plan.
Well, you know, when you talk to the race organizer, Mr. Menudo, he says he's lost any sponsors. And he basically feels that the program is dead. And when we brought it up, it's, I personally feel that the city shouldn't put any more money into it unless the landholders come to us and say, we'd love to give you a four or five-year agreement to do this. Then let's proceed with permits. But until that happens, I don't think we should be chasing it any further.
I think we kind of spent a lot of money chasing this already, right, in the last couple of years, trying to get this going, money-wise, for permits and everything. And I kind of agree with what Annie says, unless we definitely had in hand that we had a four or five-year agreement, I don't think there's any reason to keep chasing and spending money that we don't have a guarantee on. For one year, I don't think it's worth it. I think we spent way too much money already, and I kind of agree with Annie. We don't get some kind of longer agreement, and I don't think we should be chasing it.
Yeah, there's a potential for us to lose money in trying to pursue this and make it work. Because if we do try to pursue it and it doesn't work, we could potentially lose some of the taxpayers' money. Is that right? As far as
Spending them.
Time and effort spent?
You'd be expending money that wouldn't bear fruition, basically.
Correct. We didn't, yes.
Yeah. And I just, I just can't commit to, to spending the taxpayers' money on something that we don't know is going to happen. And we know it will more than likely be profitable if we did it for the citizens of Avalon. I mean, the city may take a little hit on it if it happened, but it just doesn't seem reasonable, right? It doesn't seem like it could be done right now.
And just for information, the financial analysis that we have done has determined that it is greatly profitable if it's a multi-year race, because you get the more sponsors and television and stuff like that. One-year race is not as profitable, but when you're looking at profit, one of the things to consider is there's the money that the city's spending to get the permit entitlements, and then it's offset by whatever sponsorships and increased tax revenue you have. So the city may, in fact, from, if you look at it as purely business standpoint, lose money on it. But then there's the other consideration that the previous councils have looked at in pursuing this, is that the community itself will benefit because you have a shoulder weekend and you'll have a lot of people coming. And so, previous council thought that it was worth pursuing to benefit the community as a whole, not necessarily the city, which may, which may actually lose money. But the citizens and businesses would benefit. That's been previous discussion.
And the first weekend in December is not necessarily a shoulder season as opposed to the dead of the winter season.
Okay.
Right.
I understand we can't get it done this year, but I would be very discouraged if we stopped, because you dump $2 million in this community in December, and that's a shot in the arm. It's hard to replace. And we talked to businessmen, talked to, it's just, it's missed. And I think we would be remiss if we give up on trying to get the permit. I don't think we exhausted all of the avenues available to us yet, and I don't think we're talking about a bunch of money for what the potential returns. And I think it's part of our job to make sure the economic viability of Avalon is strong and vibrant, and let you wanes moving up to the front.
But if we do not have a contract, and that's not, I'm not even trying to put the island company on notice. They have their plans for their properties, and if they're saying it's not available, I don't know what the, I just don't understand discussion and why going after permits. And how long does a permit last? So we work on a permit for a year, and it takes, you know?
We've, we've applied for a five-year permit. That's the permit that we've applied for.
And with that, well
We don't have anything to base it on.
I know.
That's the crazy thing. We applied for it, but we don't have anything to base it on.
Yeah. A permit for what?
I mean, if, when we get a five-year permit, we don't have any place to do it.
Wayne, did you want to?
We're just chasing it, I think. But anyway, that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
Wayne Griffin, President, CEO, Catalina Island Chamber of Commerce, and this won't make your decision any easier, but I can assure you from the business community, there is still extremely strong interest in seeing this event go forward. And it not only filled up a dead weekend in December, if, if this event is planned right with some additional activities scheduled for Thursday and even Wednesday before the weekend race, you know, we could fill this town for four or five nights and see a real huge financial impact. And I continue to get at least one email a month from the motorcycle community asking, when the hell are you going to do this again? Last week, I got one from somebody in Alaska who said, I'm, I'm ready to ship my bike tomorrow and come down for this race. So, like I said, I understand the issues, and I'm not trying to get in the middle of property owners in the city, but I can assure you that there's tremendous interest, both on the part of the motorcycle community and the Catalina Island business community.
Totally agree.
My biggest concern was, I really do not want to see any impact on Joe Machado Field. That was my number one. And I guess number two is, I don't know, because, and maybe somebody could just tell me quickly, even if this was to only happen for one year, is, is the return on the investment enough that even if we did it one year, it would be worth moving forward?
I think, I think that it would need to be a multi-year effort.
It would.
I think from the expenditures from what the city would spend to complete it and has spent, and then you offset the tax revenues, I think the tax revenues, and don't hold me to this, I think we analyzed that it was about $140,000 of revenue coming into the city as a result of this race. And that may be, I may be short by 50, because there was a $50,000 sponsorship from Red Bull. And then that was, so, so I think at the last time, again, with those costs and what it would take to organize, if it was a one-year event, you would be, you'd be spending significantly more money, like at least over $100,000 to bring the race in. If it was a multi-year race, then that, that everything is done, and then it's just, you know, positive revenue from the second year going forward.
However, it would need to be done this year, and we have lost the motorcycle cycle.
It can, it, if we accept, if we stepped on the accelerator, we might be able to get permits in November or October of this year. And the whole issue, the thought was, is that you need to have advertising, you need to make certain that you get a big buildup to it, because you want to maximize it, and especially with the sponsors. So this year, you could, you may have the permits in hand, but having a successful race in terms of organizers and everything, it's not likely to happen.
Right now, we don't have an organizer, and there are no sponsors.
Correct.
So, again, I don't know how many times I can say dead.
Do we have an accurate figure on how much money we've been chasing here for the last couple of years, getting permits and legal costs and everything? Do we have an accurate figure on that?
I think it's around, I think it's around 180, 190, but part of that is work we had to do to do, prepare a remediation plan for the race that occurred, and that we've mitigated that plan. Also, we've gone through several rounds with the state regulators in terms of changing the course size. And a lot of those fees have been for the environmental work in addressing what the remediation was, as well as what different environmental impacts would be in various configurations of the course.
Michael? Nice to have you back, Michael.
You know my frustration on this one. For the last two years that I was on the city council, this is where we were at this time, every year, are we going to go forward? And to keep unitanimy, we all decided, yes, let's keep moving. But at one point, do you decide enough is enough? The race was amazing for this community. It did a lot. It brought a lot of people over here who hadn't been here before. But if you can't get a commitment for the property, then why are we spinning our wheels trying to get something done that's not going to happen? Because the same thing happened last year, where people had already booked rooms, they were ready to come over, and because we couldn't get a permit, because we couldn't get signed off from the property owners, that race got canceled. So, this race is going to, the same thing's going to happen. We're going to spin our wheels for next year, only to have the same thing happen. I mean, how long do we spin our wheels?
Thank you.
Well put.
Comments from the audience? Okay, what's the pleasure of the council?
I think it's going to be hard to okay this right now. At a later time, you know, maybe next year, we can make a reconsideration of a reconfiguration of what this race is and make it a little more, a little, a little more reasonable for our community to accept it and for our city council to accept it on behalf of the people of Avalon, so that we can reassure them and the racers what's going to be going on well in advance. Something that we're more in control of under our own volition, as opposed to relying on too many other outside entities that right now, we just, we just can't bank on. So, it would be really hard for me to be okay with this the way it is.
Okay. Is there any, what is the recommended action by the body?
Make a motion just to end it, right?
Yeah. And can I, can I just ask what, and I also equally don't want to put the island company or Mr. Harold on the spot, but what were the considerations as to not giving a multi-year agreement?
Well, I think, are we not giving?
Yeah, that's going into, yeah.
Okay, so that's closed session?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion? Action.
Is there, was it?
This is review and discuss, but I would, I would like to see a little
You can direct us to stop pursuing this.
I'd like, need a motion or just direction?
Direction.
Direction to cease.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
No deal?
Oh, wait. Am I voting?
No, no. Just direction.
First, that's kind of guaranteed that we don't do it.
Item number 11.
Yes. Item number 11, actually 11 and 12 are both transportation permit amendments. The first one is from Catalina Auto and Bike Rental for golf cart tours.
Okay. And for number, item number 11, Councilmember Hernandez is recusing himself due to a financial conflict of interest.
And 12.
And 12? Okay. And he's going to recuse himself for 12 for an appearance of a conflict of interest that may not constitute an actual conflict of interest.
Okay. Just for background information, earlier this year, council approved a temporary six-month trial permit that's going to cease in September. It's Mr. Steve Woolley doing Business as Tours by Steve for golf cart guided tours. Since that time, we've received two additional requests, this one, item number 11, from Catalina Auto and Bike Rental, but also one from Brown's Bikes. So, tonight, we're asking you to discuss and provide us with direction. We don't believe that we've received adequate, inadequate demonstration as to why the, the permit is needed rather than, than desired. There are conditions set forth in the municipal code requiring that certain potential impacts to traffic congestion, air pollution, noise, et cetera, be addressed as well. So, we are looking for council's direction on this item as well as the next item, they're, they're similar.
And again, I think the only thing to emphasize was that the last permit granted was a six-month trial period to see how, how this new type of business worked.
So, with the trial basis ongoing right now, there was a lot of questions brought up as far as the liability, the financial impact, safety impact, and since Mr. Woolley is on a trial basis, we're still trying to figure out whether this is, is something that is, is going to be further needed for the community. I think it's a great idea. They're quaint little tours and I appreciate the packets that I got and I really liked the, the vehicle, but, but at this time right now, my personal opinion is that we need further analysis from the staff of the impact that it's going to have on, on Avalon itself. But I'm, I'm not totally against it, but I think we need to make a reconsideration and possibly table this idea for a later time because we have a vehicle code that needs to be reviewed. We're really impacted with the, with just all the, all the transportation that's on the street right now. And I think once we get a handle on this, we can make a more educated analysis of, of what we want and what we expect as a community from these tours and what would be best for the community as well. But I totally appreciate the packets you guys gave us and I like the vehicles that you have in mind for this. But I think it's something we need to discuss further and I would really like to hear from anybody who'd like to speak on this matter for sure, Buddy or Misa.
Good evening, Buddy Wilson, 800 Crescent. We're willing to abide by whatever decision the council comes up with tonight, whether to take direction and hold off or to proceed. I wouldn't be here if the past council had used the same discretion. At that point, I refer to myself as a capitalist, but I'm also an opportunist and you folks opened up a can of worms. There's a couple of glaring problems with what I think has applied, so please, if staff can correct me, I'd be happy to listen. You allowed a resident of Avalon with a residential permit that he borrowed from the homeowner to operate on a public sidewalk with a vehicle that essentially wasn't licensed in any other fashion other than as a normal vehicle in an island, which in this case brought a vehicle into town, which could be argued that might have provided some level of congestion instead of a vehicle already in town as far as such as one of my golf carts. Now, the staff basically said that in my situation, I have not presented the facts supporting the affirmative findings set forth by the municipal code that would allow such an amended transportation permit to be issued. Well, in doing so, you people issued a new transportation permit to a person that didn't have one and I've had one for 30 years. So, I see some glaring issues here. And again, my prejudice is showing, fine, but at this point, I'm only up here tonight to bring to light, I wouldn't be here if the past transportation permit wasn't issued. So, in this case, I'm going to call myself an opportunist and say, if this was good for the gander, let's make it good for the geese, even though I don't believe there's a necessary need for this in a long-term basis. Yes, I get asked every week, can you provide a driver? I get asked 40,000 times a year to rent a golf cart. If you don't think I don't get an occasional, say, 5%, maybe even 3% of that, do you provide a driver? Well, of course, we don't and we haven't. But if you're allowing somebody to do that, you can bet your life, I want to do it too. So, with that, my biggest question is, how did staff come up with the idea from March of this year to this date in June, there is ample transportation for city visitors, including golf carts, taxis and shuttles, which there probably is, but didn't come to that same conclusion in March? And all this gentleman, and he's an innocent party here, I don't wish to put him in a bad place, but the only thing that he brought up in his, I guess, recommendations as to why him, he has a tremendous love of Avalon. Well, I don't know that I don't, but I haven't been doing it since 1952, so he's got me there. But in this case, when you, as a council, as a city, open up these cans of worms, whether it be transportation permits, golf carts, water permits, and you are basically trying to, I guess, do the right thing, somebody has to take responsibility. And if this is the case, I think staff dropped the ball here and at that point, somebody needs to correct it. Does that gentleman need to lose his opportunity now? No, I'm not, I'm not asking for that. And if, if tabling the situation until all transportation permits can be reexamined, absolutely, I'm in favor. At that point, though, stop the bleeding and slow this thing down to where transportation permits of some kinds anyway, at least in this case, stop bringing vehicles into town, stop letting them operate off this public sidewalk and at least have a commercial sticker that's been in operation or at least has been approved by the traffic carrying officer. None of this took place. So, if somebody from staff can tell me how that changed from March to June, I'd be happy to hear it.
Me too.
Well, if I might, I think that Mr. Wilson brings up many salient points here this evening. I think that the intention at that time was a trial allowance and I think that as he's brought forth, there are many things that probably need to be considered that we could do some better work on, provide some additional analysis and we would be happy to do so. So, as a suggestion, you know, we, we could come back with some parameters, if you will, if, if a proposal like this is to be considered or, you know, perhaps the analysis might be that there is no need for this and this was a trial, we would recommend ceasing the trial. But I, I would take responsibility for that, I, I agree. I think that, I understand how the circumstances played out, those that were present might recall, it was a fairly contentious meeting, I think that our eyes were on other matters at that time.
I, I would ask that, I think Cindy, Councilman there, Cassidy, recommended that a complete analysis of the transportation permits in the last city council that I was at is definitely something that needs to be done. At that point, you know, again, I'm not in your position to make those decisions, but I think it's a worthwhile gesture anyway, so. So, I will abide by whatever city or council recommendations are at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Buddy.
Thank you, Buddy.
That was so civilized.
It's not even clock yet. As, as a member of this astute body in March, when we did that last action, there were a couple of salient points that were brought up at that time. One of them, it was an existing vehicle on the island, so we weren't adding any new vehicles to it. And as much as I love our visitors, and I think anybody in this chamber and anybody watching knows that sometimes our visitors, when they get behind the wheels of golf carts, leave their minds some other place. And the one thing that encourages me about these driven, these chauffeur-driven tours is you have a person that knows, you don't drive down Preston Avenue, you don't drive from Crooked Alley the wrong way, you don't go down East Willy. I mean, and these are the things, as someone who lives, I mean, Mr. Wilson provided a map of the suggested golf cart. And I live on the top of Marilla and my street is white, but there are a bunch of golf carts that go by it. And, and it's just, it seems, we're going to have these golf carts on the road, it'd be, in my idea, I think it would be better to have a driver that understands the rules and regulations of Avalon, the intricacies of Avalon, providing the tour as opposed to some of our visitors that get off the boat that might have stopped by Llewells before they stopped by Weddington.
Okay. So, now we need a driver for every cart.
If we had enough, it would probably not be a bad... No, it's just, I, I think that what we talked about in March was the fact that we weren't bringing any new vehicles into this community, it was an existing vehicle, so we weren't impacting, it was already part of the vehicles that are in use here. I think in both of these recommendations are existing vehicles. I do like the fact that Mr. Wilson does provide $6 million worth of insurance. I think we were remiss when we processed the other application and didn't have an insurance requirement. I think when people are using the city streets for profit, that they need to have insurance provided, naming the city as additionally insured to make sure it keeps ourselves out of trouble. So, I, unlike Mr. Sampson, I don't have really a problem with it. If we, unfortunately, we talked about a transportation study, we've talked about electric bike study for two years and four months and we haven't unfortunately gotten any place. And in some cases, you can have paralysis of analysis and I think that when we get around talking, talking about vehicles in town, it's going to drag out and drag out and drag out.
Just a quick added comment. I, I agree with Mr. Olson in all aspects of his description of that particular business. Yes, I'd love to have 85 chauffeur drivers, my insurance premiums might go down a bit. I think the most glaring issue that I had with this was the city allowed him to operate on a public sidewalk. And that's my interpretation. If he's allowed to pick up people between the tuna club and the yacht club, there is no place of business that I'm aware of between those two buildings. That was the glaring thing that brought me up here tonight. Again, this denial by this application is probably not even noticeable in our range of businesses. And again, I would probably prefer that it isn't approved, but back to if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander thing and I'm going to take, take advantage of that. So, I would like to see, again, Mr. Woolley not lose anything in relationship to his opportunity, but let's get him off the sidewalk. That's my glaring problem with this.
Mr. Wilson, one who lives in glass houses shouldn't throw stones.
At that particular point, Mr. Olson, your, your, my golf carts are closer to your house than mine.
I was talking about the line in front of your business on the corner of Crescent and Metropole.
If, if that will need to be corrected, I'll be more than happy to correct it if you'll correct the other one instantly.
That's an inside joke?
No. There is, there is a yellow line that's dictating my property from the island company and yes, we do edge over that, but at that particular point, I'm sure my operations person here in the room heard that comment and will make sure that that's rectified shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, what is your pleasure?
Hi there. How are you? Hi, me, 131 Metropole. So, on August 27th, the Hermosa Hotel had filed an application that would permit us to give our guest a tour. One month later, September 16th, our application was denied because of congestion. Four months later, January 16th, the city received the scenic tour application, which two months later, they approved his application. Now, on May 6th, the Hermosa sure enough filed again, but we were denied. I would like to give Buddy credit for his speech that he made and also ask that the city made a huge mistake for giving scenic tour the permit. Why, how are they able to operate on a commercial without a commercial permit and just use the residential? The insurance is, like Sampson had mentioned as well, is he paying the five mil, the $5 million liability insurance?
And I don't have an answer to that, the city can respond. That was prior to my time.
No. I, I believe, and this is part of what's already been brought up, is that there are insurance considerations that should be examined. It's been mentioned a couple of times now.
Okay. So, is there any new data that you...
The new data is, how, how is this fair to business people? I mean, for example, Mr. Wilson and the Hermosa Hotel. And after they, the Hermosa had asked for the same privilege that the scenic tour had asked for, then gets denied. After he was granted, Hermosa gets denied again because of congestion, but we are an existing cart, just as Mr. Woolley was an existing cart on the island. Just make, the bottom line is, how is this fair to the people? We would ask for some logical sense be used to make this decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. Great point, both of you guys. Mr. Wilson and the gentleman just spoke, there's definitely the, possibly some things that are, there's definitely some things that have been overlooked here, okay? I wasn't sitting in this chair when they were overlooked. I'm sitting in here now and when we did get elected to this city council and as we were running for this particular position, we had in mind, and it was on our platforms, most all of us, that we were going to make a reconsideration to the vehicle codes in this town and that we needed to do that. And that's exactly what we're, that's exactly the plan that we're sticking to now and we're going to make reconsiderations. We're not, we're, we're totally for entrepreneurs making new experiences for our visitors, creating new exciting things. Golf cart, having somebody as a guide is a great thing, as long as, as it's, as long as it's in, in the confines of what we need to keep the quality of life, the impact on, on other vehicles, on existing businesses, on pedestrians, on other vehicle permit and business owners in this town, on liability, on safety issues, all these things, we are now going to bring to the table and, and reconsider as we look at our vehicle code. I'm totally, I'm totally flattered by some, by, and, and I think that some of these ideas are brilliant and I think they would boost the experience that the visitor has as well as possibly... I think they would boost the experience that the visitor has, as well as possibly create a better situation in our town for a freer flowing traffic. So, what I'm saying is that, I'd say we table this idea until we have a chance to get our stuff together up here, till staff has a chance to analyze what's going on, and we gotta know exactly what the parameters are, and of what these types of tours are gonna be, what we'd like to see them to be. And that's where I sit with this right now. I will take, I will definitely take the blame for this. I mean, I'm sitting here now, I will take the blame for the mistakes that have been made in the past, or the things that have been overlooked. And I will say that I will definitely take that in consideration when we, as a staff and a city council, come up with guidelines for this particular type of tour. Misa?
Can, may she talk on 11 and/or 12, for since they're related, or are you going to just be speaking in general terms?
I think we, right, I think the, we brought up both 11 and 12, so it's appropriate.
Okay, come on.
Yeah, basically, what I'm saying, would like to say, as Buddy said it much more eloquently than I could have, is that this is why I came up, when I saw this be approved, I was shocked, and I, but I thought, okay, I'm an opportunist too then. I have a location, I, we get people all the time, same way, they can't rent a golf cart, they don't have a driver's license, they're handicapped, and so they want a tour. And so, I thought, well, okay, I have a location, I have a golf cart, sounds like the same thing, I love the city too, why not? But it didn't make sense to me in the first place, knowing that they didn't have the insurance that I have now, shocking, but I can know now.
Thank you.
And I just wanna say, they, the municipal code requires them to have public liability insurances set forth in the, for a transportation permit. So we'll follow up with that, because it's one of the code requirements.
Okay, he is in on you.
Just one other point of consideration to add with all three of the businesses that are asking about this. The current drivers for both other tour companies are required to be Department of Transportation checked, have the proper licensing, and have a passenger endorsement. Most of these vehicles will not meet the size requirement for that, which means they won't be required to have periodic drug and/or alcohol testing, they won't be required to meet some of the more stringent requirements that are met by bus drivers. I'm just wondering if that's something that should be considered when you're looking at this overall...
Isn't that for eight or more passengers, though?
Generally, it is, but if they're driving people through town in a vehicle that is much less secure than a traditional vehicle, and I'm not saying that anyone, anybody would employ would be of that mindset, but if it's happened with people that are employed by larger companies, it's gonna happen with people that are employed by smaller companies too. So it's something to consider covering, since it won't be covered by the state.
No, thank you. With regards to the vehicle review, and which you said hasn't been done in a while, and it keeps getting bogged down, how do we actually get it accomplished? You know, because I don't want this to go on forever and ever and ever.
Well, I guess there are a couple of questions. So you could direct staff solely to address this particular matter, which would make it a very manageable project, okay? You could do that. If you wanted to broaden the scope, and it's vehicle policy in general, I would recommend during our next brainstorming session, where we identify our goals, that we drill down and very specifically talk about how we want that to be covered. You could do both, you could say, provide some analysis and some recommendations specifically as it relates to golf cart tours, and also during the brainstorming session, then come forward with policy goals.
Well, I kind of would hate to move on one before the other, the little one before the big one, it doesn't seem to make sense to me. Go ahead, Cindy, anything?
Well, the transportation review was one of my top five items from our brainstorm session, and we have not spoken other than, I think this is the third meeting I've said the same line, that the transportation review was my top, one of my top five agenda items. That's as far as we've gone with it. I think it would be more appropriate for myself and my fellow council members to actually put their thoughts down, perhaps email you, I could list off probably 50 different bullet points of things that I'd like to just look at as far as the transportation review. Once just that basic information is compiled, that could potentially come back in a brainstorm session and say, do we wanna review this now, or do we wanna review this at a later time? I do not understand what analysis on, I mean, this, I guess with specifically to number 11, and I have different questions on number 12, but specifically on number 11, these businesses already rent golf carts. The request is to actually put a driver in the golf cart. So I don't understand, I'm not catching the, what the concern is with that, with not moving forward with that.
Well, I think that, a couple concerns. Number one, it does potentially open this up to some other applicants, and I think that you have to consider if that is a permitted use that you want to proliferate. That would be one thing that you should consider. I think that we also need to do some better enforcement in looking at our own code requirements for the one existing trial applicant that we have as far as it relates to insurance. I think there have been some concerns brought up tonight, specific to the place of business that the trial applicant is operating from. Those are things that I think we need to talk about in general. Also, maybe other considerations, you know, as far as congestion. Do we need to put in conditions about stops and manner of tour and so forth? In other words, I mean, are you gonna allow it to proceed, or you can point things out, slow down in the street, et cetera? Those type of things. Not very eloquent, but that's the type of analysis that we're...
No, I understand, I understand.
I like the idea of sending the city manager all your ideas about transportation, but I'm interested in defining transportation as vehicle and vehicle use in Avalon. I'm not sure that we want to bite off all of the transportation issues in Avalon, which is from the cabs or the tour buses, to private golf carts, to commercial golf carts, to bicycles, to whatever those other things are called. I mean, it's, I think if we try to address all of those at one time, we'll get, continue to be bogged down. I think we can talk about vehicles and the usage of them in Avalon, and parking and issues like that, and congestion issues. I think that, if we focus on something like that, I think we're gonna achieve a successful outcome of that. I think staff has taken a fairly narrow view of the transportation permit as it applies to this applicant. I kind of agree with you that, you know, he's already doing this, and now we're taking drivers in there, and I think, as I said earlier, drivers that understand the community, are an asset to the community, as opposed to somebody just gets off the boat and just starts driving around, so. But I'm willing to table this and let staff continue to develop some further recommendations for businesses like this, and I'll wait their suggestions.
Do you have a direction, Eddie? Not a direction?
I think so. Is there anything additional procedurally here?
Don't ask him.
No, so the motion is to, not to deny, but to table these two requests, pending review of the vehicle code as it pertains to the regulation of vehicles.
No. Table these two applications, let staff develop the standards for these sorts of businesses in Avalon separately, have the vehicle review and the vehicle code and the use of vehicles in Avalon. Two separate actions.
Correct. So only direction was given. Buddy, did you wanna say?
Excuse me, can I just interject a thought here? I think Mr. Olson has the right approach to this. Approving, tabling, whatever you're going to do tonight regarding these two applications has no significance to the transportation in Avalon. Again, we were here based on an opportunity, not a direct need, we're dealing with small percentages. So if you cut the transportation issues in Avalon in three to four pieces, I don't wanna say which, how the number is right now, and start from there, and quit worrying about exceptions to the rule, then you're on the right path. The next part of it is, and I'm saying this as constructively as possible, find some people that know something about transportation. I'm not saying any one of you don't, but I can tell you that there's a lot of people in this town that have relative information, that have work experience, that have seen the ins and outs, myself included, which Mr. Mayor Kennedy invited me to participate on the last city council agendas for transportation, which unfortunately, we never met. But, the fact is, is that you guys could be talking about this two years from now, you need to start getting something, take the piece, whether it's the total number of golf carts or total number of vehicles allowed in the community, and work backwards, I don't know. Worrying about this particular thing tonight is not important, as far as the transportation reality of this small community.
You're right, you're right, Buddy, thank you. Okay.
Do we have a motion on the table? Or do we need a motion?
We were just gonna direct staff.
There's gonna be no action, Eddie.
I think anything we can do to resolve some transportation issues is significant. I, as much as it may seem, oh, it's just a couple of golf carts, it's significant, because we're taking a step in the right direction, and we're doing what we vowed to do. So, I say we table this, and we bring it back.
And staff has been directed.
Staff has been directed, okay.
Yeah, so we're good.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 13.
Yes, the remaining and last item on the general business section of the agenda is a proposed ordinance adding a definition of gross receipts to the municipal code. This is an item...
Did you go get Richard? Oh. Apologies.
Thank you, Denise.
No, he's coming, I just emailed him. Apologies to Councilmember Hernandez. Okay, let's try this again. Item number 13 is an ordinance adding a definition of gross receipts to the municipal code. This is an item brought forward, well, it was initiated by a prior city council, the city attorney has worked with our auditors, we didn't have a solid definition of gross receipts within the municipal code. This item tries to create that definition, and I would defer to the city attorney for additional explanation and a brief update. Scott?
Right, yeah, basically, what we're trying to do here is, the municipal code bases certain fees and taxes on gross receipts, and there's no clear definition in the municipal code as to what a gross receipt is. And so what we've done here is to look at the municipal code, and what we've done is what we believe is a uniform definition of gross receipts that applies to all businesses in the city equally. And basically, what it says is, if a fee or tax is based upon money that a business receives, a certain percentage of 3%, 7%, for leases, it's 5%, that what that business brings in for that, for that service, that's a gross receipt minus any taxes that that business pays for sales tax, or taxes that it otherwise pays the city. So for instance, if you're paying a harbor use fee, you're not taxed on, the harbor use fee itself will not be taxed. If you're paying an admissions fee, admissions fee will not be taxed. So it's all that, whatever, you know, the base prices for the services across the board, so whether it's a package deal or whatever, if you charge someone something, the fee that that customer pays, that's not a tax, is now going to be included in gross receipts. We subtract it out, if someone puts a package together and they're getting a commission, we're subtracting out the commission from gross receipts, but we're capping the commission at 20%. Some businesses, the auditors found, were saying that their commission, in other words, money that they would pay themselves for profit, is 50% to 60%, and that's not really reasonable. Or, so now we've said, if you're gonna pay a commission, if someone's gonna put a package together, a commission that you pay to a third party is excluded from gross receipts up to 20%. If you pay it for yourself, well, that's money that you're paying for yourself, that's included. What the auditors have indicated by looking at this, is that with respect to, we are including some things that may not have traditionally been considered gross receipts, if you put a package together and you're saying, you're gonna put, as part of the package, if you want rental equipment, that's gonna be part of gross receipts, so revenues will go up a little bit. But because we are specifically excluding some of these taxes, that's going to decrease revenue a little bit, so it should, about wash. We've looked at the municipal code provisions, and the municipal code does provide for these things, that the business owner can impose this tax on the consumer. So again, it's, you know, when you come, it's kinda like when you pay a sales tax, this is an additional fee that people are already paying. What we're doing is, we're just trying to make it simple and uniformly across the board. So, we've spent a lot of work on this, we've worked with accountants, we've worked with our auditors, we've looked at the definition statewide of gross receipts, and come up to what we think is a reasonable definition of gross receipts that will apply across the board. And hopefully, will be simpler for the businesses going forward.
So, if I, if I own a hotel, and the room is $300 a night, okay, and then, but Ole's going to, so I'm paying on...
Hotels are different. Hotels are not taxed on, hotels are not taxed on gross receipts.
So to snorkel and rent a golf cart package and something else?
Correct.
It's thrown in there, it's $300. And then Ole, so I'm paying, and then, help me out here, because this is really tough for me to understand. And then Ole sells that package for $350, okay, as the second guy down the line, okay, he's the whatever. Okay, so, I, the person that owns those three businesses, are paying you the admissions tax on all of those things, because there's no sales tax, I'm just paying the admissions.
Correct.
Okay, and then he sells it for $350.
Correct.
That's just all profit for him in that situation.
He had to purchase that from you.
He had to purchase, okay.
Right.
So in those things, then that's okay. But it's when there's sales tax, then, explain the sales tax.
Okay. Basically, if a business, as part of the fee it charges, includes the state sales tax and the city sales tax, okay, and then there's a harbor use fee that is a 7% or 4% harbor use fee, before we calculate what the harbor use fee is, we subtract out the sales tax. So the businesses, because it's, the city would not be basing its tax upon a tax collected by the state. So it should result in, you know, lower, it should be easier to calculate, and at least in my view, and the views of many other cities, in how our lease is, is that we don't base our, what you pay the city on a tax that the city's already collecting. In other words, if part of a package includes the harbor use fee, and there's an admission tax, we're not gonna tax, we're not gonna add the harbor use fee to the... admission tax, we're not going to tax, we're not going to add the harbor use fee to the, or base the harbor use fee on the admission tax, and vice versa.
Misa.
Okay, but what my question is, I rent a bike for $10, so 40 cents would be my 4%. Or do I take my 4% off the $9.60?
Well, it's what you, what you, you can, you can either do it two ways. You can charge the $10 and then add on the 4%, or you can, if you charge just the $10...
If I charge them $10, but I'm saying 40 cents of that is tax?
Well, if you only charge them $10, and that's what all, that's what they pay, then you've got to take that, that, that 4% out of the $10. But you have the option, and the municipal code provides that you can, you can charge them $10 and say, and by the way, there's a 40 cent, you know, admission tax.
So I can charge them $10 and 40 cents?
Yes.
Okay. So if you're talking about something that's $400 though, like a hotel room, and then that...
Different taxes.
But hotel, hotel, the TOT doesn't have gross receipts in it.
It's regular revenue.
Based on, TOT is based on room rate. But, but let's, let's go back to Misa's example. She rents somebody a bike for 10 bucks and she sells them a candy bar. So what I've heard you say and what I saw in the, in the report is you're subtracting out the tax. What I don't hear you saying is you're subtracting the income that that other tax is based on. So, if, if she sells a candy bar for two bucks and has to pay the state 6.5% or whatever it is on, on that, it seems to me that those ought to be two separate things.
But we're, okay, well, first of all, we don't, we don't tax, we don't impose a gross receipt on a candy bar being sold, if it's not part of a package deal. Like if you go, if she happens to have a thing of candy bars and you're just purchasing a candy bar, then it's just a regular sales tax.
Unless you're a tenant.
If it's like, what?
Unless you're a tenant.
Unless you're a tenant, correct. Because, because then the rent is based upon all receipts. But, if you're saying, we're going to put a bicycle package together and it's going to be $12, and that includes a delicious nutritious ta, snack, then that's based upon the $12.
So, so, just to really, to distill it, it really just eliminates double taxation. It allows for a reasonable commission.
That's my question. I don't think it does eliminate double taxation. I think there's still some double taxation.
Well, if you're putting together, and this, and this really only applies to packages, okay? So if you've got a package where it's, it's these items cobbled together, it's ensuring that you're not paying taxes on the taxes that were already paid, and then you're able to carve out up to 20% as a reasonable commission, if I understand correctly.
Paid to a separate, again, gross receipts shall mean the total amount received from all revenue sources during the relevant period, except admission taxes, sales taxes, California redemption fees, well, that's the 5% you pay for a thing, and use taxes and fees and reasonable accommodations which are paid to, to a third party. Use taxes and fees are fees that, that the city gets. I'm going to insert the word "city" there, Avalon. And so, again, if you're paying a sales tax and we have a fee based upon a gross, this is only for fees that we charge based upon gross receipts. And so if a fee the city charged is based upon a gross receipts, we're not going to include in that what you have to pay, a ta, a sales tax or a harbor use fee or an admissions tax. We're excluding that from what a gross receipt is.
But what, what you're saying is you're excluding the tax.
Right.
You're not excluding the revenue.
The tax.
Correct.
So you're not taxed on the tax.
You're not taxed on the tax, but you're still taxed on the revenue, and then the state is going to want its sales tax on the part that's subject to sales tax.
Right.
So there is double taxation.
No. Well, it's a separate tax. In terms of, if, 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 if in fact you're looking at it as, yes, you're paying the state a tax, and you're also paying the city a fee, well, then I guess that you could say that that's double taxation, but that's what's going on right now, anyway.
Ms. Marshall?
What, what we're trying to do is say that a city fee based upon gross receipts will exclude sales tax, and will exclude any other city fees or city taxes.
I think a way to simplify it, Mr. Campbell, might be to say that a package is made up of components, and each of those components, components might be subject to a different sales or use tax, and so we're not taxing you on those sales or use taxes. So if, say a, a package has a rental boat in it that's got a harbor use fee and an admissions tax, it's got a bicycle that's got an admission tax on it, and it's got a round of golf that's got an admission tax on it, all of those admission taxes get backed out, and so you, if, you don't pay them twice.
For, for the purposes of establishing what the gross receipt is.
Right.
If you're a tenant of the city of Avalon, you get to pay your rent based upon those gross receipts. So it's kind of an apples and oranges thing.
But, but when you threw the candy bar onto that bicycle, and then you said it was $12...
Well, after a $2 candy bar.
And then, you said it was $12 and she was paying the 4% on that $12, is what you said, but she shouldn't be, the candy bar goes out, but you said 4%.
No, no, because it's part of the pa, again, it's, it's how they sell it. If it's like, you're going to get this wonderful tour, and you're going to charge this admission fee, and part of it is your bike ride and part of the, the tour includes a delicious $2 snack.
Right.
Which is a candy bar, then the cost of the tour is $12.
Right.
Okay?
And we get 4% on the $12.
Correct.
And then she's still going to have to pay tax for the candy bar.
No, candy bars aren't taxed. It's food.
Oh, it's food.
So listen, since you added on a can, a, well, a can of soda, which is sales taxed, so you would deduct the sales tax out of that, so the balance would be figured in the gross receipts.
Okay.
And I, and our whole, I worked, I talked with the auditors for about an hour last week on this, and our plan is, is assuming that this is passed, to send letters to all the businesses explaining it to them. We are hopeful that this results in, it is easier for them, hopefully, to, to compute and eliminates the argument that we're imposing city fees on city fees. And which we can legally do, and the way the municipal code is set up, that is, has, you know, the auditors have been saying that, that this allows us to, to do that. What we're doing is we're clarifying that, just to make certain that that's no longer the case.
If you're selling a tour and you're going to take somebody diving and charge them $100 for the tour, you're taxed a 4% admissions on that tour. If you're thus advertising that tour to include lunch and that tour now becomes $125, then your admissions tax is on the $125, because the total package price for that event is $125. It is no longer $100.
Correct.
So it's just a, a...
State board wants you to tax the food portion of it. If you have a continental breakfast in a hotel, you have to apply a particular percentage of your rent to the food portion and pay sales tax on that. State board legalization...
Well, yes, but I'm talking about the Avalon. She's, hypothetical is an Avalon tax.
Right, I'm just trying to clarify that it's, that it's based on a, on, it's based on when you change it from an, from a one thing of a tour and you're adding more to it to make it something grander. When it becomes something grander, you're selling that as a package, therefore, the, you could potentially be getting more people going diving because you're including lunch in it, therefore, that's part, that's admissions tax.
And that's my point, that's a much better example, because now the $25 is subject to, for lunch is subject to state sales tax. So, in my mind, the business is going to pay the sales tax on that $25 lunch, and now the city's saying they also want 4% on that $25 lunch.
No, I think, I think we're saying, I don't think, I think, we're excluding, we're carving out...
Just the amount of sales tax the business pays.
Right, if it's part of the package, yes. And, yes, if it's part of the...
But we're also carving out the admissions.
Right.
So we're carving out the taxes for the calculation of what a gross receipt is.
I mean, if, if a business put together a package that included lunch right now, they'd have to pay the sa, state sales tax anyway, right now, period.
I, I still think there's double taxation in there. I, you know, you're...
This is limiting. Assuming, assuming for the purpose of argument that you're, that, that what you're saying is true, it is the intention of this to result in a lesser double taxation.
Okay.
But I disagree with the characterization of this, because when you pay the state a tax and you pay the city a tax...
Part, part of the area, I operate a dive boat that I sell the $100 package for, or I'll also include lunch for $125. I'm not paying anybody that $25, I'm paying myself that $25.
Maybe.
Okay, but if, if I was, in the good old days when I was in the hotel business, we would package things that would include sales tax, like we'd package a meal. And so the meal cost me $10.60, I would deduct from my revenue the $10.60 because I paid it to somebody else.
Exactly.
And they paid the sales tax on it.
Exactly.
The area of confusion comes in the fact when you take that outside vendor out of it and you become the vendors to yourself. When, when I go buy the food, prepare the food, sell you the food, sell you the tour, how am I allocating, there's, there was, used to be a famous $60 continental breakfast in Avalon, because some hoteler figured out it was cheaper to pay sales tax on the continental breakfast than it was to pay transatlantic fees tax. And so he allocated $60 of the room rate to continental breakfast.
Yeah, but there, there's another $30 breakfast in Avalon that people, other than the overnight hotel guests, routinely pay.
Oh, no, I...
So, so that hotel is legitimately deducting $30 from their room rate, room revenue that's subject to TOT, because that $30 is subject to state sales tax. And, and it can be proven that that's going rate.
Again, this does not apply to...
I understand, it doesn't apply to TOT, but to me, the principle is the same thing. That, that's all I'm trying to say.
And the issue is who, how you as the operator of the tour pays for that meal. And if you pay for that meal to a third party, then it's a clean deduction. If you are attributing a portion of that dollar amount to the meal, then you get into the iffy area like how much of that is subject to sales tax.
How much is that worth? Okay.
And I think that's, I think we're trying to simplify that.
Any other comments? What's the pleasure of the council?
Want a motion?
Sure.
Move that the city council introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance adding a definition of gross receipts to the Avalon municipal code.
And with note that the one I'm inserting in, to the thing, the city of Avalon, between and in use on the third line.
And waving further readings.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
All ayes.
Okay, well...
I'm thinking that, not only, well, we're going to take a break now, but it may be, some of the closed sessions may be rather long, and so if there are any items that we want to go to at the end of the calendar in terms of city council reports or city manager reports, and not to hold the audience here at home, but it may make sense to do those right now.
Okay.
Agreed.
I don't have anything to report.
Start with city manager.
What's that? We'll start with the city manager. Do you have any other report?
I just have one brief thing. We will be reaching out to each council member individually to get scheduled the next brainstorming session in light of the budget study sessions that are coming up in the next two weeks. I want to have at least one brainstorming session prior to then. So, yes, we will consume some more of your waking hours, we'll try to keep it very prescribed, and we're going to pick up where we left off, where we redistribute what we came, came up with last time, and if we want to add to that, revise that, that's what we will do. So, thank you for your patience. We will get to you individually to find a time that works. That's all.
City attorney. Let's make the announcement. Oh, not quite, yeah, we'll go to city attorney first.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Okay. Council members?
Okay, just recently there was a skate park event, and it was last week, and I just wanted to thank the people who put it on and let the community know what a great event it was. We've been talking about reconstructing our community and making it more, just, just friendly and, and rebuilding it, rebuilding it from the ground level up. And I just want to thank the LA County Sheriff's Captain Doug Federal for emceeing the program. We had Rhonda Kajic of Choices was there, she did great work. Doug handed out all the skateboards and helmets, there was probably 150 kids down there, there was a lemonade stand, there was popcorn, there was music, the recreation department, Jordan, David and Jennifer were there. I want to thank Max and Tracy and all their kids. Justin Reynolds, we had three professional skaters there, Justin Reynolds, Preston Pollard, and Daisy Johannes, and it was a total success, and the kids loved it. This is what our community is doing to go forward, to deal with some of the issues that we have with the kids, that they're not, they're not kids' issues, they're adult issues, and we're trying to improve the quality of life for everybody in town from the ground up. Also, I want to thank, actually Daisy Johannes, again, called me on Friday night, because there was a water leak up on, and potentially could have leaked hundreds of gallons of water down Marilla Street. She called me at my home, and I, the first thing I did was think, well, Ed Arnold from Straight Up Builders lives up there, so I'm going to call him and get his advice, he's a contractor, and he gave me the advice to call Edison. I called Edison, in the meantime, he actually went out and fixed the leak himself, so I thank Ed Arnold and, and the Straight Up Builders crew for taking care of that water leak up on, up on Marilla Street. I also wanted to acknowledge that I spoke to Debbie Wright, who lives in Avalon here, and I want to acknowledge her concerns about her meeting her water supply demands that Edison has put on her, and they've been, they've been diligent in their water-saving efforts for years now, and they're really concerned, and this is why I want to encourage somebody, Edison, to come back up here and let's trail this thing the next meeting, or sooner. Maybe give me a call, or the city manager, or any of the city council members, so we can expedite what the problems are in Avalon with the billing, with people's variant, variations of what their, their water supply allotment is. I want to encourage everybody in town to please save water, be diligent. I definitely want to thank Randy Harrell for helping us out with putting a sign out at the showers, out at the Scanso Beach, and helping us with that. And I want to encourage the restaurants and all the business establishments in town to conserve water and respect the stage one rationing that we have in place right now. In other words, try not to, don't serve people water unless they ask for it. That's one of the biggest violations that we have right now, and I know it's not going to save a lot, I mean, but it's the same thing as like if everybody turns off the faucet when they brush their teeth and they don't, they only, if they have freshwater toilets, they only flush it down when it's brown, things like that. When you see a leaky faucet, drinking fountain sprinkler, things like that, give, give the city manager, his assistant a call and bring it to our awareness. And we're going to go forward with our water-saving diligence, and we're going to go for, with, go forward with it with vigor. So I want everybody to know that, we're all over that, and that's all. Thank you for listening.
Ole?
Yeah, the, since 1973, we've had an underground requirement for new construction in Avalon, and somehow remodels are exempt from undergrounding, at least specifically, we're not sure. If it's not part of the standard condition... If it's not part of the standard conditions, could we make one of standard conditions to make sure that, because if we don't ever start undergrounding, we're never gonna underground stuff, and there's a whole bunch of new construction in town that should have been undergrounded and it's not.
Right, the, the code requires that new structures or buildings be undergrounded to the extent that, there's no definition in that, we can put it in a condition of approval, that if you've torn something down and you're rebuilding, it's a new structure, and you gotta underground your utilities. We can clue that as a standard...
The famous Avalon remodel, the one standing 2x4, then it's legally non-conforming, you get to rebuild it?
We can clarify that, but we're gonna, we're gonna add it as a condition of approval, so that if you're coming in and you're tearing down your building and leaving one post, no, that condition of approval's gonna require you to underground the utilities.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, have you received, today I received several complaints on helicopters coming in, have you received any of those, Ben?
Yeah, I could speak to that briefly, and Councilmember Sampson and I have also discussed this, and I think the, the root cause, just involves the whole council, I was advised in talking about noise as well by Councilmember Cassidy, that there's a promotion that Island Express is offering, wherein I think they're giving eight minutes for $50, and so I think that's why we've seen...
It was a special for the Flying Fish Festival.
Yeah, so that's why we're seeing some of the proliferations. I know this has been of concern for, for some of the council, and I'd be happy to follow up with what their long-term intention was. I also had a discussion with Councilmember Sampson about, in the future, if we wanna talk about, other municipalities have parameters for, for noise from aircraft, they have times of operations, they, they some designate zones, so we can look at that as, as well. Just, so as a starting point, I think, you know, the first thing I probably need to do is find out how long this promotion endures, and discuss that, you know, there have been some concerns about the impact to noise in the community, and then report back to you all.
Yeah, that'd be great, especially since we're concerned with the cart noises, and now we got a helicopter overhead, so that would be nice to get back to us.
Sure, and then I think I also probably, you know, just to be fully responsible on this one, I should probably tell you, ask them how it impacted their business too, just so you have that full picture, so you can...
Yeah, the VP in charge of operations, I think her name was Mimi, she was, she was very gracious in extending her awareness and her, giving us her acknowledgement about our concerns, and, and she was willing to accommodate whatever needs that we had about noise, safety, and just nuisance kind of thing, and she actually acknowledged and immediately made adjustments with her pilots to, to help us out a little bit, and with the noise and just the nuisance factor. So I wanna give kudos to Island Express helicopters for being so acceptable to, to what our needs were.
The only reporter comment that I have tonight is that I wish that we still had the hype about our water quality report that came out just recently, and I would just like to encourage all hoteliers and, you know, people that have the ability to talk with the public, to keep that on the forefront of their minds, and just how excited we are with the progress that we've made, and not let that report go unnoticed, and just not hearing as much about it, and hoping that we can step up some marketing efforts with that, if need be.
Great idea, because, because the critics are not bashful in bashing us when we were down, so, great idea.
Okay, well, now we're going into a closed session?
Yes, we have three closed sessions tonight, public employee performance evaluation for the city manager, conference with legal counsel on two existing cases. The first is regarding the K through 12 school site, and the second is Tabari Oliza versus the city of Avalon.
Thank you all for coming.
And we're back from closed session. Any reportable actions?
None.
Well, Ben, I guess we say goodnight.